Hello, how are you today? My name is Ayodji Anifuwochi. And this is Great Father, Great Husband YouTube channel. Where we come your way every month to this session of prayer with me. Prayer is very important and then we can't over emphasize it. The power of prayer can never be underestimated. When you have people to pray, there is a God that can answer. Wherever you are all over the world, invite your friends and loved ones. We are praying again for singles as directed by the Lord. I know the Lord God Almighty, we, he will do wonders in our lives. Very important. Before I continue, let me say one of prayer. We're gonna short break and we'll start out fresh. Dear Lord, we are grateful for today. We thank you for the opportunity to come into your vineyard in this space to pray, to pray. Because we trust, we believe in the power of prayer. As we do this today, we ask Lord God Almighty, please, please hear our prayers. Everyone you have proposed to be part of this today. We ask that you order the steps here on this channel to be able to watch and pray in the name of Jesus. And every verse you have prepared for today, I ask that your power rest upon everyone. That everyone that comes out of our mouth this day, it will bring out wonders in the name of Jesus. Let your name be glorified, oh God. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen. Alright, we're gonna be back shortly and then we'll continue. Welcome back. Very important, why do we need to pray for marriage? In this channel, why? Why is it important that we pray for singles at this point in time? The reason is that, so that, okay, question, how do we undo the fact that we are having a lot of marriage, gonna get in divorce, problems year and day? By God's grace, I'm a married counselor and I see a lot, I hear a lot. How do we now manage this issue? When we get it right from the beginning and we continue, we continue. But nobody is able to understand. No one is able to figure out how to navigate this journey. Except we are able to hear from the Lord. Except the Lord is able to direct you. No wonder the scriptures say that, order my steps in your word. Order my step in your word. If it was left to me alone, I would have been led astray. I don't think I would have married my wife, no. Not by my understanding. I wouldn't have. I would have gone, you know, another direction that I felt was okay for me. But that was not exactly what God asked for me. That was not God's plan. God's plan for me was not exactly that. So it's very important for us to understand this. And that's why we are praying. We're not just praying because, oh, let's just, let's just, let's just do whatever. No, it's because when we pray, prayer does not affect God. Prayer affects us more. It is we. It's more for ourselves. Prayer is more for you than for God. I repeat again, when we pray, the prayer is much more for us than God. God hears our prayer. So we are the one that our fasting and prayer affects more, should affect more than God. Your prayer will not change God. Your prayer is supposed to change you. Or change situation or circumstances around you. We need to understand that. So that we do not turn prayer to something else. And I said it before, prayer is communication between we and God. Prayer is you bringing God, permission, permitting God into your own circumstances or situation. You are giving God access. So sometimes we have not really prayed. We have not prayed and we want some things to be. No. Prayer is very important. Before I go marry, I did a lot of prayer, I've been praying. When, and then, I also have an idea of what I wanted. But at some point in my life, I discovered that, I think I need to stop all of this and just give it all to God. When I did that, then God took over the will and he did it exactly the way it is. I promise you, to the glory of God, I enjoy my marriage. I love my wife. I'm enjoying my wife. I'm enjoying every bit. That doesn't mean that, oh, we don't have challenges. We have our challenges year and day, but our challenges is not what determines things. We have the will of going over that and then we just move on. So please, it's very important we know why we need to pray. Why we need to talk to God. Why we need to inquire of the Lord on what we need to do. And you know, we cannot do that without first checking. We can't do that without first checking the scripture. What is the scripture saying? What is the scripture saying about the institution of marriage? What was the idea of God when it comes to marriage? I'm gonna be reading some scriptures through us and then we'll pray. Very important that we understand what God is saying. What is God saying? What is God saying exactly? What is the plan? Why did God bring up the issue of marriage? Now, if we look at the book of Genesis, that's, that's scripture many of us are very, are used to. God was talking to Adam. He says that it is not good that a man should be alone. It is not good. That means it's good for a man to be with someone. To be married to someone, not two persons. Don't let people deceive you. It is not scriptural. It is not good for a man to be alone. 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 He said, he now said, let me, let me look for a very good version here so that we understand what God was talking about there in the book of Genesis 2. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Very important that we understand that so that we are able to pray so well. So that we're able to pray so well. Yeah, verse 18 of Genesis 2, it says, "And God said, it is not good that man should be alone. I will make him and help meet for him." Let me check another version. That's King James. It is always said, the Lord, the Lord God said, "I see that it is not good for the man to be alone. I will make him the companion he needs. One just right for him." Let me say it again. "I will make him the companion he needs. One just right for him." We should understand that that means that everybody is not right for you. That means that every, every, every woman, every man is not meant for. There is, there is one that is just right. It's scripture. This is, this is a word of God, not my word, God's word. So that means that when we are talking about or pray about marriage, we should go back to this scripture. Then the Lord God said, "It is not good for the man to be alone." So, for you know, okay, okay, Bible says that I should not be alone as the man. Then we now go to the other part where it says that, "I will make him, I will make the companion he needs." So as the man, this should be your prayer. The Lord, help me know the companion that you have made for me that will take care of my needs. Yes. Yes. Then, the one just right for him. That's why you cannot be looking out for yourself when it comes to marriage. God has to help you because he knows our individual needs even better than we do. He does. He does. You, you might think you know, but you don't. He made you in his own image. He knows every part of us. So he knows exactly what you need and why you need what you need. And he knows who exactly will be able to fit in. I don't think there's anyone that, that, that would be, 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 be good for me to marry than my wife. Because she's, she's exactly perfect for the job God wants done in my life. For what God wants to do through me. And nobody else. He knew. Even though I, I, I had my own thought, I'm like, oh, this person should be, my God said, no. So it's very important that we understand that God is the one that can help us navigate this journey. Not add knowledge, not, uh, uh, what do you call it? You know? Uh, 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 marketing people together, no? If God is not involved, yeah, I agree, you could be introduced to one person. You could meet one person or another, you know, you could meet one person year and day. But if it's not directed and led by God, it cannot be. People can see all kind of table. This is scripture. Because how can you, how can you know who is just right for you? How? How can you know? How can you know? I've gotten, I've gone to so many places in my life and then, and then God would direct me. Okay, for example, I think I've shared it before somewhere and I mentioned the fact that I got to airports. I was traveling and then my layover was about 10, 10, 10 hours. I'm like, 10 hours, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna undertake hours. And the Lord told me, go look for the VIP lounge. I'm like, VIP lounge? I'm like, alright, I'm gonna search for that. And I went to the VIP lounge and then what happened? I'm like, what's gonna happen here? And I asked them, how much is it gonna cost me to be here for the next 10 hours? And they gave me one, one very crazy bill. But to cut lots of story shots, before I knew it, a guy came in and they attended to him and the guy asked me, can I pay for you? I'm like, sure, I'll be waiting for you. But wait a minute. How would I have known somebody was right there waiting for me if not that God revealed it to me and he prepared the person to be there? God has to be involved. Do not let anyone deceive yourself. Don't let people deceive you. God must be involved. If God is not involved, you are setting yourself up for failure or traumatically failure. And you, you don't want to do that. You don't want to do that. So what we need to pray is for God to help you. So first of all, let's thank God. Let's thank God for knowing that something is not good for us and, and is able to make an institution for it. Lord, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for always meeting our needs. You know what we need as human and you are able to fix it for us. You are able to do it for us. We are grateful, oh God, oh God, Lord Almighty, we lift up your name on high. We say thank you. We honor you. We glorify you. We magnify you. Thank you, everlasting Father. Thank you. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. We give you praise, oh God. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. We're gonna pray for mercy. For every one of you that are singles, that, that have been searching on your own, that you have not been involved in God. I wanted to cry for mercy. Say, Lord, I'm sorry. I'm sorry for thinking that I could figure this out on my own. I'm sorry for, for even getting into a relationship that you didn't order for me. I'm sorry for getting into, uh, into, into whatever process that I think that I could use to help myself to be able to be married. Lord, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry for all I've done. I'm sorry for not involving you. I'm sorry for not putting you in the picture of everything going on. I'm sorry, Lord. I'm sorry for not asking you before I said that proposal. I'm sorry for, for, for not asking you before I, I, I approached that lady. I'm sorry, Lord. I'm sorry, Lord. Thank you, mighty Father. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Yes, don't feel bad. Yeah, it happened. It happened to me too. I, 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 I've been in a relationship that, that it was not fully ordered by, by the Lord. It was ordered by the Lord. I didn't ask him. I just thought, oh, this person is a good sister. She's good step and then and I feel like, oh, she will be good to, 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 to be a wife. But it was not a lot. Not, not because the person was evil or was a, was, was a, was a witch of witch, wizard or whatever. No, but, but it was because that was not what. Now see, after that verse 18, that it said, "I will make the companion he needs. One just right for you." Now listen, verse 18 says that, "The Lord God used dust from the ground and made every animal in the field and every bird in the air. He brought all these to the man and the man gave them, they, gave, gave, and the man gave them all a name." The man gave names to all the, all the tame animals. Let me run back to verse 21. It says, okay, okay, it's a, it's a, it's a, it said, the man gave names to all the tame animals, to all the birds in the air, to all the wild animals. He saw many animals and birds, but he could not find a companion that was right for him. He couldn't find a companion that was right for him. Verse 21, "So the Lord God caused the man to sleep very deeply. While he was sleeping, while, 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 while he was asleep, God took one of his ribs from the man's body. Then he caused the man's skin where the rib had been. The Lord caused the rib from the man to make a woman. Then he brought the man to the woman and he said, and the man said, finally, one like me with my bones, with bones from my bones and a body from my body. She was taken out of man. So I will call her woman." So, God did not want to do trial and error. God, they want to do, let's see how it goes. That's how many, 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 some people get into relationship without finding out exactly what God wants done. They want, they do, they are not ready to go to look for what God wants done. They want to, we, we, we want to be doing trial and error. Now, God wants to be sure that the ribs that is missing from Adam is the exact one is given back to him. Not every ribs you find around will fit into you. There is a particular measurement of your ribs that was missing that needs to be fixed. You need to find the exact size. You can't tape it. You can't try to glue it. It has to fit in perfectly. Don't force it in that you will end up damaging your life. That the other ribs will be damaged because you are trying to force in. Many people today, they try to force the rib in, then it became an issue that probably also cost their lives. Don't force any rib in. God adored all things from the foundation of the earth. So you do not have to do your home job all afresh again. Let God lead you. He has a perfect rib that will fit into you as a, as a man. As a woman, he has someone, a man that he had made for you that your rib will fit into, that you do not need to beg to fit into. That you do not even need to, need to manage to fit in. You do not need to, uh, 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 you know, tie around or, 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 or to, to, to just hang around it. No. There is a perfect man that when your ribs is, the, the missing that you have is being fixed into the man, it becomes perfect. It is the word of God. Do not let anyone tell you otherwise. The word of God says that there is someone that can meet the needs that has the exact size of the rib. So our own job is to pray and allow God open our eyes to see who and where the person is and what we need to do. So it does not just stop there. You still need to continue inquiring of God. How to manage that relationship? Somebody want to pray tonight? Somebody want to pray this morning? Whatever the time is, whenever you are the one. Say, Lord, open my eyes so that I may see the one that you have prepared for my journey of life that will fit into me perfectly. Thank you, mighty Father. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. We're gonna invite our first guest, Adam, uh, sister of mine. And she will be leading on this prayer for the sins as well. And then we'll go from there by the peace of God. That I bless you. Please stay tuned.
Good morning, afternoon or evening, wherever you might be watching from. Drop in the chat where you're currently watching us from. I want to appreciate God for this privilege to pray together with you. And I want to appreciate my brother and sister, pastor and Mrs. Anifuwochi for this privilege that I do not take it for granted. I do not take it for granted at all. Thank you so much. During this time, we'll be praying for those waiting on the Lord for marital partners. And I want to encourage us to really pray. I want to encourage us to really pray. Give effectual and fervent prayer of the righteous man a feallet much. And I pray that our expectation will not be caught short in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. Is someone currently saying amen? Now, waiting for marital partners is not always an easy time. It is not always an easy time. It's a time when your expectations are kind of low. It's a time where there's no motivation to do things. There's sometimes you're motivated. There's sometimes you're no longer motivated. You're like, what's even the point of doing things? There's a time that you can't even really say, this is how tomorrow is going to be. And waiting is not always easy. No matter the wait, whether marital wait or waiting on the fruit of the womb, waiting on any kind of miracle or breakthrough whatsoever. Waiting on anything, wait is not always easy. And there are some things I want to, I want us to note during this time and any time of wait. And the list is not limited to what I'm going to be talking about. But I'll be reading some passages in the Bible. I'll be reading some passages about some people that waited, about what we need to be doing when we're experiencing any wait whatsoever. And concerning the topic we're praying about today is waiting for marital partners. And so I'm gonna be reading some passages of the Bible even before we start praying. First, I'll be reading from Esther, the book of Esther, chapter 2. I'll read from verse 8. Esther is a popular book in the Bible. I believe most of us right now already know what I'm going to read from, but let's just follow along from verse 8. "So it came to pass when the king's commandment and his decree was heard, and many maidens were gathered together unto Shushan, the place to the custody of Aga, that Esther was brought also unto the king's house to the custody of Aga, keeper of the women." Now, wait, let me back up a little bit. Vashti had misbehaved to the king and then the king had taken Vashti out of the palace. And it was time for Vashti to be replaced. It was time for, it was time for a new queen. And the king's advisors had told him that, okay, see, king, let us find you a young maiden that you can marry and replace Vashti. And now it was time they started setting maidens to come around, like to come and audition for the new queen. And they placed this maidens in charge of, they placed Aga in charge of the maidens. Now, Aga, let me back up a little bit. Now, A- Esther was brought onto the king's house to the custody of Aga, keeper of the women. And the maiden pleased him and she obtained kindness of him. This is talking about Esther. And the maiden pleased him and she obtained kindness of him. And he speedily gave her all her things for purification, which such things as belonged to her and several maidens which were neat to be given her out of the king's house. He preferred her and her maid unto the best place of the house of the women. Now, this was Aga. Aga was in charge of the women. And as soon as he laid his eyes on Esther, Esther immediately had favor with him. And he gave her all the things for her purification, everything she needed to excel, he gave unto her. So in the time of wait, every single person, every person need an Aga. We all need an Aga in our lives at one given point in time that will look upon us with favor and will give us, now, Aga to you, my men, that person that will just tell you what to do, will just tell you where to go, will just tell you where to worship, will just pray for you sometime. That might be Aga for you. That might be Aga for you. As soon as Aga saw her and we further to read about it. Now, verse 12 talks about when every maid's turn was to go into King Heserus. After then, she had 12 months according to the manner of the women. Now, it talked about Aga giving her everything. Aga telling her that, use this amount of oil. Use this particular oil. This is the kind of lotion, this is the kind of perfume the king likes. So we can see that Aga was guiding her. She had Monica also. But Monica wasn't in the palace at that time. She had Aga to, to, to guide her. And the same thing too for the men. Because we are praying, we're not just praying for the single, we're not just praying for single ladies or single women today. We're also praying for single men. There is an Aga and that is what we have to prayerfully descend. We have to pray, we can't just look around and say, okay, this person is my Aga. No. We have to prayerfully descend the Aga God has placed in our lives. We have to prayerfully descend the Aga God has placed in our lives. And during the season of waiting is a time of descentment. It is a time of preparation. It is a time of prayer. Don't just say, oh, I am waiting, I am waiting and I, I am waiting. I don't know what God is doing. I don't know why it's taking me time to get married or it's taking me time. I know the time of wait. Trust me, I have been, I have been in that season of wait before. Marital wait, I have been in that time of wait and all that types of wait. So I know what waiting is and I know it is not always easy. But the time of wait is the time of preparation. Verse 12 of, of Esther, chapter 2 says, "And when every maid's turn was come into King Heserus, after they had been 12 months according to the manner of the women." So they had 12 months to wait before they actually saw the king. For someone here, the wait might be more than 12 months. Also in Daniel, chapter 1, "When Daniel and his friends were taken from their country, the king selected choice men so that they can serve in the king's palace. But before they could even serve, the king had them, had some people train them for three years before they could even come into the king's service." That is a time of wait. So there's always a time of wait. Now, what do we do with that time of wait is what is important. Because sometimes we can just get carried away with the weight we are going through. We can say, oh, I am waiting. Oh, this is not happening. And then we become detected. No, the Bible says, "With joy shall we draw, joy, we will draw, shall we draw strength from the well of salvation." So it's with joy. I can remember there was a time I was waiting on something, not married right now. But then my mom would always encourage me. She would always say, with joy, with joy, with joy. So sometimes when we're waiting, I know it's, sometimes we'll say it's easier said than done, yes, I know. But the word of God, the amount of the word of God we hide in our hearts will help us and also. People around, so you see, the word we hide in our hearts. Now, look at this person called Agar. Agar was placed strategically. Now, Monica could not go into the palace with Esther. But there was this strategic man, there was this destiny helper that was there for Agar. There was, there was there for Esther at that time. So now, as a single person, we need to prayerfully, we cannot do it on our own. Our own strength cannot carry us through the way most times. Sometimes we are weary, sometimes we're hard, but sometimes we are not always there. We need somebody. And that's the place of Agar. And we are going to prayerfully, we are going to prayerfully descend that Agar in our lives. When we prayerfully descend that Agar in our lives, God speaks through that Agar to us. And then we'll follow in Jesus' name. We will not miss it in the mighty name of Jesus. So in the time of waiting, what should we do? We should prayerfully seek out Agar. We should prayerfully seek out Agar in our lives. The same thing. Another example of Agar was, was Naomi to Ruth. She was followed, Naomi was her mother-in-law, was Ruth's mother-in-law. She was following her. And then when her, her sister-in-law, her older sister-in-law, which is called Uppa, went back. Um, now, Ruth said, I will go with you. I will not leave you. Your God shall be my God, your people shall be my people. And then she had lost everything before. But when she followed Naomi into the land. Now, Naomi began to, uh, uh, Naomi began to guide her. Naomi began to guide her that, okay, go and tread, go and tread in this, in this man's field. Go and plant in this man's field, go and walk in this man's field. And while she was walking. Now, another thing, first is descending your Agar. Number two is in the place of service. Number three, we have to do what we need to prepare at that time. Your preparation might be spiritual preparation. Your preparation might be physical preparation. It might be different kind of preparation. And even as I'm talking, God might be ministering to you what type of preparation you need to do. But these are the things that need to happen during the waiting period. Another instance is the instance of um Isaac in Genesis, chapter twenty-four, verse twenty-two. Now, Isaac, we know Isaac being the son of Abraham. Now, Abraham had sent a servant to go look for a wife for Isaac. And now, Isaac, verse sixty-two says, now Isaac had come from Bel, Lyre. Roy, for he was living in the Negev, he went out to the field one evening to meditate. And as he looked up, he saw camels coming. So he went to meditate. First, we're talking about prayerfully seeking, prayerfully seeking an Agar. Number two, we've talked about the place of service. We've talked about the place of preparation. We've talked, now we're talking about meditation, prayer meditation, prayer and meditation. So a time of wait, a time of wait should not just go like that. It's not a time of complaining, a time of wait, a time of wait, a time of wait. Is a time of consecration to God, is a time of prayerfully seeking Agar, which is our, uh, which is the sermon. Is a time of receive prophetic advice, is a time of prayer, is a time of thanksgiving, is not a time of complaining. Now, 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 I haven't said all this. Now, let us begin to thank God. Let us begin to thank God. We're entering the moment of prayer right now. We're en- we're entering the time of prayer. Let us begin to thank God. Let us begin to thank God. Let us begin to thank God for every single man, for every single man. Every single lady, every single woman waiting on the Lord for marital partners. Let us begin to thank God. Lord, we worship your holy name. Lord, we thank you. We thank you because we are even alive. To even wait for a miracle. We thank you because we are even alive, because only the living can even wait for marital partners. Hey, thank you, Lord. Father Lord, we thank you. We thank you for every single man. We thank you for every single lady. We thank you, we thank you. We thank you for this time of prayer. We thank you for what you yet do in our lives. We thank you because of what you've even done. We thank you for what you've even done, that we are only aligning ourselves with the victory you wrought already. On the cross of Calvary. Father, we thank you, we thank you, we give you all the praise. Lord, we worship you. Lord, we thank you, we thank you, we thank you. We give you all, we give you all, Lord. We give you everything we are lifting out and that's before you, Lord. Lord, we give you all the glory. We give you all the praise. We worship you, Lord. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Jesus. Lord, we worship your holy name. We bless you, Lord. King of glory, we worship you, Lord. We bless you, we bless you, we bless you. We thank you, Lord. We thank you, Lord. We give you all the glory, Lord. Is someone currently thanking God? Like I said earlier, that a time of wait is also a time, a time. Of thanksgiving to God. When you begin to think, when you begin to think about your life, you would find reasons. You'll find reasons to be thankful. And that's what we are doing. We are finding reasons, we are finding reasons. If you need to sit down, if you need to pause, if you need to pause to write down what God has done. You need to do it. You need to do it because that is when you are thoughtful. That is when you are thoughtful. If you are not thoughtful, you cannot be thankful. Lord, we thank you. We thank you for your numerous blessings. We thank you. In Jesus' name, we worship and give thanks. Amen. Now, let us begin to cry out to God for mercy. Let us cry out to God for mercy. Mercy is not just, mercy is not just for offenders or sinners. Mercy is not just for offenders or sinners. Even our being alive is a product of God's mercy and grace. Lord, let us begin to ask Him for His mercy. Let us begin to plead for God's mercy. Lord, even as we pray, oh God, today, let you look upon us with your mercy. Oh Lord, look upon us with your mercy. Your mercy is what we seek, oh God. We are not righteous, we are not, we are not, we are not. But by you, we are righteous. We are not, it's only you that's qualified us. It's only you that's qualified us, who are we to even come into your presence, if not for your love, if not for your mercy. Lord, look upon us with your mercy tonight, today, this morning, this afternoon, this evening. Even as we pray, look upon us with your mercy. Your mercy, oh God, your mercy is what we seek, oh God, your mercy. Look upon us with your mercy, for you are full of mercy. You are a merciful father. Look upon us with your mercy, for we do not even know how to pray. Look upon us with your mercy, oh God, your mercy, your mercy, your mercy. Your mercy is what draws us out of our lonely state into your presence, your mercy, oh God. Your mercy is what we seek, your mercy is what we seek, your mercy is what we seek, your mercy is what we seek. Look upon us with your mercy, oh God, look upon us with your mercy. Oh God, look upon us with your mercy. Look upon us with your mercy. Lord, we plead your blood, we plead the blood of Jesus. The blood has spoken better things than the blood of Abel. The blood has spoken mercy, the blood has spoken compassion, the blood has spoken forgiveness. Look upon us with your mercy. We are not righteous on our own. It's only by you that we be qualified. Look upon us with your mercy. You might be saying, oh, I have done everything right from the beginning. Ah, I did not fornicate, I did not do anything, I have been righteous. But the law, even the Bible says that righteousness is just like a fedora in its presence. Oh God, Lord, we cry to you for mercy, oh God, for your mercy. Your mercy is what draws us out of our sinful state. Your mercy is what qualifies us, even by your blood. Lord, look upon us, look upon us, look upon us, look upon us, look upon us. Look upon us with mercy, oh God. Lord, let her cry touch you. Let her prayers touch you, for we do not have a high priest that cannot be touched with the feelings of our infirmities. That said, time is against them. That said, time is against them. Oh Lord, look upon us with your mercy, Lord. Look upon them with your mercy. Look upon us with your mercy. Look upon us with your mercy. Now, let us begin to pray in the spirit. Let us begin to pray in the spirit. Because it is the spirit of the Lord that breathes over, that broods over every darkness. That broods over every darkness. It causes light to shine on every eating situation. On every eating weight, on every eating part of our lives. Even those things that we do not even know why they are happening. Some people might be asking, why is this weight happening? Hey, it's not that I've not done everything right. It's not that I've not done things right. But it's only the spirit of God that can brood over every darkness. It will cause light to shine. It will show you things that you do not even know. Spirit of the mighty God, spirit of the mighty God. We cannot search things by ourselves. It's only the spirit that search the deep things. Yeah, the deep things. By all power, can we do nothing? We cannot do anything by all power. Our physical eyes can't even see things, except the spirit opens, except the spirit illuminates. Even in the beginning, the spirit began to over, the spirit began to look around. And then there was discovery, there was discovery. Holy Spirit of God begin to brood over every life, over every single person's life right now. Currently on this, currently on this channel, currently on this channel, currently on this channel. Or watching on the rebroadcast. Father Lord, Holy Spirit, begin to brood over every darkness. Begin to brood, begin to brood, Holy Spirit. Lord, Holy Spirit, begin to walk, begin to walk, begin to show, begin to show people. What they need to work on in their life, whether they need to prepare, where they need to discover things. Where they need to pa- prepare, where they need to do some things. Holy Spirit, begin to discover, begin to discover for them. Open their eyes, open our eyes. Let us see the things you want us to see. Let us hear the way you want us to hear. Let us talk the way you want us to talk. For some people, it might be physical things that the spirit wants you to change. For some people, it might be physical things, it might be material things, it might be physical. The spirit might want to illuminate some things to you, or might want to tell you, might want to tell you. Engage the spirit of God, engage the spirit, engage the spirit. Even as we pray, Holy Spirit, begin to illuminate, begin to illuminate, begin to show, begin to show. Begin to show them, begin to show them what they need to do. For Daniel, for Daniel, it might be a time of preparation. It might be a time of preparation before Daniel could even go see the king. Before they could even go see the king, they were prepared for a time of three years. They were preparing, they were preparing, learning the language of the childrens. They were preparing for a time of three years. Shata, the king said, find men, choice men without blemish, without blemish. Hey, men of knowledge. Esther took her, she purified, she purified. She went through a time of purification. Many Holy Spirit begin to show you how to purify, how to purify. Eh, Kaliada, how to stay in a time of meditation, a time of consecration. A time of prayer. God might want you to start praying right now for your future, for the future of your husband. For the future of your children, your prayer bank might be low. Begin to refuel. Begin to refuel, begin to build up. Begin to review, begin to build up. Begin to build up your prayer life, even from now. Because marriage is not just a destination. Ah, kaladosha. It's a place where you also need to move into your prophetic destiny, into your destiny. Kalakalosha, your waiting time. Your waiting time is a time of preparation. Is a time of preparation. Kalakalakole, kulekele, dekele, dekele. Hey, it might be a time God is trying to show you. Is a time of preparation, begin to prepare, begin to prepare, begin to prepare. Now, we are moving into another part of the prayer. Whether the, whether the waiting is as a result of any covering that is not of God. Any covering, any covering that is not of God. Ekaloko belededasha, the breaker has gone ahead of us. To break every chain, to break every covering, every covering. Covering you from being discovered, every covering. Covering you, injuring you from being discovered. Every covering, injuring you from being discovered. We tear it down by the blood of Jesus. We tear it down by the blood of Jesus. The blood that speaketh better things. Kalika lava kosatalia dada da. Every gate standing between you and your marital destiny be shattered right now in the name of Jesus. Who is this king of glory, the Lord strong and mighty, the Lord mighty in battle? Lift up your head so you get up, and be lifted up everlasting dust, that the king of glory shall come in. Who is this king of glory? Akalekasata yada da dokobelediada da. The spirit is accent, the spirits are accent. Who is this king of glory, the Lord strong and mighty, the Lord mighty in battle? Lift up your head so you get up, and be lifted up. Every gate, every spiritual covering, standing between men and women. Standing between them and their marital destiny be lifted, be broken, be shattered in the name of Jesus. Elakumenekosatalia dedokosata. We come in the name of the Lord, we come in the name of the Lord. He that has the key of David, he that has the key of David, he that opens and no man can shut. He that shuts and no man can open, kalida basata. Every gate, every gate, every gate, every covering, covering your children and their destiny. Be shattered, be shattered. Nidena kalaba kobele dekelede. We come in the name of the Lord. Kasateli obade kosatoliya, likemana kosatoli. We come in the name of the Lord. He that has the key of David is holy, because he breaks. He has broken the gate of brass and called the bars of iron and sand. Kilakosatalia dada, who are thou great mountain, who are thou great covering, who are thou great gate? Before Zeruba bell, that shall be complained, that shall be complained. Kalabo kosatalia dada. Paul was saying, Paul was saying to the Christians, he was saying to the Christians of some, of a church. That I tried so many times to come to you, but the devil in that. For the devil disturbed, but the devil in that me from coming to you. And that's the way it has been for some people. Your marital destiny has tried coming to you so many times, but there were so many gates, barriers, coverings, covering you. Kalia bakose telia kobeleka lakashata, leke setekolo dabadosha. Ekali kalabo kobele yada da. Every covering is broken, every covering is torn. Kalia dada basa. When Jesus died on the cross of Calvary, he said it is finished. Therefore, any existence of every covering that is not of God be torn, be torn, be torn. Because it is finished. By this was Jesus made manifest to reveal the works of darkness. Kilakumenekusaka, likene moko beleka asata. Lika liada da, with decree upon every gate, be, be looted out, be uprooted, be uprooted, be uprooted. In the kalia vokosata, begin to see what God wants to, wants you to see. Begin to listen, begin to listen, begin to hear as God wants you to hear. Begin to see things, the Holy Spirit is illuminating upon your path. Begin to see, begin to see, begin to see, receive divine direction, receive divine guidance. Ekalako beliada da, every covering, every gate, every, every gate, every covering is taken away by the blood of Jesus. The blood, the blood, we plead the blood of Jesus over every single man, over every single lady. Ekalia vokose telia, lobakobe liada da. We plead the blood of Jesus, we plead the blood of Jesus, we plead the blood of Jesus, we plead the blood of Jesus. We plead the blood of Jesus, hey, we plead the blood of Jesus. We plead the blood of Jesus, we plead the blood of Jesus. Kalia vadoze ketiolu beni akusteke, lekeshatalia da kusete yede. Blenene kule bedekusa katiala deisha. Ebre kenene kule bedekeli dobodosa taya ladeisha. Abrekelonwubasa katialade de, abasata yada da, lekeni omonosata. Thank you, Lord Jesus. Thank you, Lord Jesus. Ekalavo nomane ke setelediada dabadosha. Hallelujah, thank you, Lord Jesus. We bless your holy name, we give you all the praise, we give you all the glory, Lord. We bless your holy name. This confidence we have in you, oh God. And when we pray, you've answered us. When we act in your name, you've heard us, you've answered us. You said we should call unto you, and you answer. And you show us great and mighty things which we know not. Thank you, Lord, for this time of prayer. Thank you, Lord, for speaking to us. Thank you, Holy Spirit, for praying through us. Thank you, sweet Jesus. Thank you, our Father. We, your children, have come to say thank you for what you have done. And we return all glory and honor back to you, God. For in Jesus' most wonderful name, we have prayed. Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor and Mrs. Anifoshie, thank you so much. I appreciate you for this privilege, and I pray that the anointing on your life will continue to increase in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you for having me.
Welcome back. Thank you so much, my sister. Thank you for that wonderful session. The Lord bless you and make his face shine upon you. I'm so grateful to God for that. You know, picking up on that, from where I stopped the last time. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna pray a bit more, and then the next guest will come. Oh, Pastor Shergun, uh, will be here with us by the grace of God. So, there is a partner for you. There is someone, somebody for you. God is an intentional God. God is a God that, he knows what, what he's doing, and he knows why he's doing whatever he's doing. So, why not you take advantage of that and let him help you? Every step of my life that I've fully involved God to navigate, I found joy in there. As a believer, I'm talking to believer now. And if you have not yet accepted Jesus Christ as a God and Savior and you're watching me, please, I beg you. Please, 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 I beg you in God's name. I beg you in God's name, I beg you. Come to Jesus, come to Jesus, come to Jesus. You can waste a word of prayer if you're out there and you have not known Jesus, or not seen him, even before you continue. Or you have known him and you are playing games with the Lord. Come back, let him save your soul, so that you can enjoy the full benefit he has for you, as children. Said you, Lord, I'm sorry for all I've done. I confess my sins and I accept you as my Lord and Savior. I believe in you that you are the son of God. Please save my soul, write my name in the book of life. And please, establish me in your kingdom, help me love and serve you, grant me grace to grow in you. Thank you, my Father, in Jesus' name, amen. If you have said a word of prayer, please, find a Bible in church near you. If you don't have one, you can reach out to me through any of my platforms, on Instagram, Facebook, and then via YouTube. I'll surely respond to you, and I can recommend one for you as the Lord will lead. Going forward, we need to pray. The reason why it's very important to pray before you navigate the journey of marriage is because. Marriage have a very strong impact on our nation, on the community, on the government. Let me give you an example. If I, okay, I was born into a home where my father, I've been a pastor, my mom too, had been a minister in the church of God. And then, I've been taught some principles of life and Christianity. I've been taught that I, I must not do certain things. For example, my parents taught me to honor people, not just people that are older than me. My parents taught me to give, to be generous. My parents taught me to, uh, to love people. My parents taught me to, uh, be committed to what I do. My parents taught me to be the best in all I do. Uh, all of this came out of the fact that they mind themselves and they were able to bring out these values that they instill in me. Now, I, on the other side, I now go out on my own. I meet other children that probably they came from other homes where they are ma, they, they are, the marriage of their parents is crazy. And then because of that, there was no good value they were instilling, they can't even see the, their, their parents leaving the lifestyle of what they are teaching them. Now, the things that my father or my mom taught me, being generous, loving people, are the things that they do. Like, they do, that's what they do. My mom is so loving that if she needs to give her highs out to someone that needs it, she would do. I'm, I'm just telling you literally what she can do because of the kind of love and affection she has for people. So, when people ask some of the things I do, I'm, I'm like, well, I, I, I got it, like my wife might say, I got it honest. So, that's why it's important to pray. For any young lady, every single lady, single woman watching me. You have to be careful of the body you put your rib in. Choosing a right partner would not just, choosing the wrong partner would not just bring you suffering, but it could end your life. If you are forcing that your missing rib in the body of the wrong person, and you are trying to force it in. That rib could break and it could cost lots of life. So, when we have good marriages in everywhere we go. Every nation will be good. So, now the things that I have been taught from my own, I go out there to imbibe on other people. The same way, the wrong things, that some people, some people believe that it's all right to beat a woman. Because that's what their parent, uh, they, they see with their parents. So, when the guy go, gets outside and also see a young lady, or a lady trying to do something, it is very easy for, for the lady to slam. Because that's what he has seen the parent doing. Somebody that I've seen the parents stealing. When the guy comes out, he wants to steal, and he wants to also influence other people to steal. Because that was what they got from their marriage. Can you say that? So, when we get it right in marriage, we are not helping just ourselves, we are helping the nation. And I remember I told somebody, I try my best to influence people, but I can't. What I'm saying in essence is this, you need to take this serious. Open my eyes, oh Lord, open my eyes, oh Lord, open my eyes, oh Lord. I'm ready to see your will for my life, not permissive will. I want the perfect will, your perfect will for my life. Perfect means that it fits into, without trying to maneuver, without trying to do any kind of magic. If you get it right in marriage, oh God, you are settled. Then you cannot navigate the journey from there gradually, gradually. Please, please, get it right, get it right, so that our children can be saved outside. So that the community can be saved, so that the nations can be good again. When you want to know how unhealthy a nation is, look at the marriages. A marriage is a mirror of what happens in a nation, society. If marriages are doing well, a nation will automatically do well. It will. Now, to get the perfect rib, you need to pray, study the word of God, get counsel. Don't go and be looking for a coach or counselor after you have found someone to marry. Before you step into the waters, get counsel, get counsel, get counsel. Nobody will look for light after they have started walking. People look for light before they start the walk, so that they can see what they are doing. When you get counsel and pray, you are automatically shining light before you begin the walk. How do you fit in that rib if there is no light to shine, to see? How? I'm gonna take a break shortly, I'm gonna be bringing in our next guest, and I will be praying for them. But before I leave, I want us to pray one more time and say, Lord, help me, help me navigate this journey of marriage. I will not miss it, in the name of Jesus, I will not miss this journey. Rakatosoriabalabosha, melilebo sharia dada balabah. Emaroko tozoriyada balaboh, epeliata tazata rebo. Ammananabo shagiradaba, zakatroko tozoriabo. Irakatasata dada balaboh, emelia dada 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 bo. Erriakatakatakatakakaba, majariako tozonekebo. In the name of Jesus, reyalalalabo shadaba, in the name of Jesus. Meliaroko dekebo. Thank you, Lord Jesus. In Jesus' name we are praying, amen. A message I'm bringing is Pastor Shergun is gonna be leading us in prayer as well. And I pray that as we pray, the Lord will use him to open our eyes and help us navigate this journey in Jesus' name. Amen. Stay tuned.
Oh, all right. Hello, everyone. Uh, let me start by appreciating my host, Pastor Ayudeji Anifoshi. I, I do not take this for granted, I appreciate it so much. And I know that this platform has been for a while, like a discourse with me, which of course, and I've seen, uh, some of the. Uh, the past months, I've seen it online, and I know a lot of great things would happen. So, I've just come as a co-liberal to add to the great and mighty things that the Lord has been doing. On this platform and with this ministry. And I trust by the help of the Holy Spirit, that even beyond the words that we'll say, beyond the prayers that we'll make. Beyond the, the wisdom, the counsel that might be given. In, in, uh, 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 this period, this time. In in uh 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 this period, this time that we have, that the Lord will walk beyond those words. He will walk with those words and then we do much more than the things that you even think that it's gonna do, it will do much more. So can we just make a short word of prayer together? Before I go into read some scriptures and I'll be praying and we'll be praying together, reading scriptures. God of all life and grace, we thank you for this precious moment. We thank you because you are God that answers prayer. Your word says, ask and it shall be given, and we have come to ask and we know that will be given and we will receive. That the door we knock on shall be opened and what we seek we shall find and all glory shall be yours totally in Jesus' mighty name. Amen. Hallelujah. And I I I'm so glad. I know pa- prayer is a powerful force. And I I like to say something, that the man who prays never doubts the power of prayer. You see, if you ever happen to see anyone who doubts prayer. Maybe the person is not praying. Because prayer works, it definitely works. Beyond just walking the things that you're asking, it will also be working on you. It will be working on you, you realize that the more you you make requests. Or you place place your desires before God. You talk about the things, the cares, the worries, the anxieties, the delay, the needs. You talk about the things, you communicate with the Father about these things. Beyond just God doing those things, there's a stillness, a calmness that rests on your soul, that rests on your heart. There's a peace beyond human understanding, there's a joy unspeakable, full of glory. That fills your heart, that garnishes your heart as you pray. And we must understand that there is nothing too big or too small to pray about. I remember recently I was sharing with someone online. And I and I told the person that different times in my life, not only this person, I've shared it even in different, some places. That there have been times in my life when I would be at home looking for something and, you know. This whole thing, we have to be careful where we may go the last option in our lives. We just want to do things and I'll be looking for things and we just get to a time after a while or some minutes of being tired. Not knowing where I kept the thing or where I placed it last. And I was like, Holy Spirit, lead me, show me, tell me where this thing is. And suddenly, there will be a flash in my spirit. I was just, there will be a flash sometimes, okay, this is where you kept it, or a particular place would just flash in my spirit, and because I prayed. So I am conscious, I'm expectant, I'm sensitive, that the things that will come up in my spirit will be answered. You know, the Bible says in Jeremiah thirty three, it says, call unto me and I will answer you. And I will show you greater mighty things which you do not know. So when we pray, one of the ways we can show that we know that God will answer, we can show our expectation. Is by watching out for pictures in our spirit. It could be pictures of particular persons, pictures of of places, pictures of events. So it will just flash in my heart, then I'll go to the particular place that flashes in my heart and I'll see the stuff there. You know, ask and it shall be given. God is so good that we can go within our cares and talk about issues. So you see, marriage is destiny. It's something that we can also pray about our marriage, pray about our marital destiny or adventure, or pray about who to marry is crucial. We live in a world where many people have 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 found a way. To to live life without God, you know, and they boast about it how they don't need God. And that they're able to do this or do that, run their business, run their marriage, get married, do this without God. And it's it's something they brag about. But you see, that should not be the testimony of a believer. It's not anything godly, it shouldn't be the testimony of a believer. The testimony of the believer should be of the involvement of God. God wants you to involve him so that the glory can go to him, he wants you to involve him. So do not think that it is too small or or it's not necessary. To pray about your marital adventure or your marital destiny or who to get married to and all that. God has helped many people because you see, after the decision to follow the Lord. One of the very important decisions you have to make in your life is who you live life with. Is who you are gonna get married to. Because you see, whatever the Lord has called you to do in life, if you get married to the wrong person. You are in soup, you know, somebody said something that, I was still gonna pray, please listen to all this. He said, once you get married to a wrong person, even the devil will leave you. He said, once you get married to the wrong person, the devil will leave you because you are already where he wants you to be. It doesn't need to trouble you again, he has, you see, a wrong partner is already an agent or representation. You get off the enemy in that home, in that family, so the devil will leave. So you see, it's very, very important, it's not something you should be careless about. There are many things about our lives that we are careful about, where to study, where to school, where to live. But it's surprising that many of us are not careful about who to marry or about our marital destiny. We just think it's all about, you you just go to a place, one day you meet somebody, I like how this person talks, I like how this person is and and all that and. And that it doesn't work like that. I wrote some things that which I'm gonna be saying and we're gonna be praying with. And so please, it's it's very important, prayer, very, very crucial. You see, there are people who are destiny stoppers and there are people who are destiny starters. There are men that you will get married, see, there are people who got married and their destiny stopped them. You know, the same way some people have horror of fear around them, some people have negative horror. They get married to a particular person and because of the horror around that person, their own destiny stopped. Some people get married and got married and their ministry ended. Because the person they got married to didn't allow them to serve God. These things are very important. No matter the horror that is boiling, no matter the grace of God on your life, no matter your plans, no matter your desires. No matter how noble, how great they are, a wrong person. Will crush it. So you see, these things are very, very important, very, very important. I I want us to look at two scriptures, which is the ankle, as I've been given, Genesis chapter two, verse eight. And Genesis chapter, the same chapter, verse eighteen, we're just gonna read it, look at one or two things. Then we're gonna begin to pray. But can I first declare over your life, as you are watching this? You're a single person, you're married and you're watching this right now, congratulations. And I declare as a prophet of the living God, that you will not miss it maritally in the name of Jesus. It does not matter how many people around you have missed it, or family, or whatever, or friends. I prophesy over your life, whatever the enemy is doing. So that you will miss it maritally, I cancel such right now in the name of Jesus. I declare that you will not miss it maritally. You will get married and you get married quick, you get married in a good way and your marriage will last heaven on earth. A representation of the glory of Christ in Jesus' mighty name, we pray, amen. Genesis chapter two, verse eight. The Bible says, and the Lord God planted a garden east toward in Eden. And there he put the man whom he had formed. You know, just as God has placed each and every one of us in this, in this, on this health. He has placed you, it says, he planted a garden and he put the man whom he had formed. And in verse eighteen, the Bible says, and the Lord God said, it is not good. That the man should be alone. I will make him and help mate for him. This is the will of God for every man. This is the plan of God for your life. So you see. Whatever is stopping you from getting married. Is working against the will of God for you and is something that you must, you must stand against. You must stand against, you you must stand against it aggressively. Because the will of God is that a help mission is given to you. He said, it is not good that man should be alone. So marital delay, marital failure is not a good thing. So to be married is a good thing. You see, it is not good that man should be alone, you know, the opposite of good is bad, so it is bad. Now, I'm not, I don't want you to feel bad, I want you to understand something, I want an aggression to rise on your inside. To understand the will of God for you. It does not matter what is being mostly preached in the society today. It does not matter what the enemy's enemy might have been saying to you. It does not matter the dream, it does not matter the experiences your parents had, your uncles are hunting. The will of God remains the will of God in it and it is for you to be married. And in the name of Jesus. After this encounter, after this prayer session. You will begin to do things right, you will begin to see things right, you will begin to make right decisions. That will begin to order your steps. Towards the fulfillment of the will of God for your life in the mighty name of Jesus. Let me say this, you see, one of the things in, let me show you, first Samuel chapter sixteen. First Samuel sixteen. It's a very common story when God sends Samuel to the house of Jesse. To anointing a king, many of us might have heard about this story before. To anointing a king there, and when Samuel got there, you know, he haxed and so all the children passed. And he started seeing, he saw one, he looked like a king, you know. The way he was looking, the physique, the stature looked like, oh, this, when this one appears. They say a king has appeared. But you remember when Goliath was defeated. It wasn't the size of the man that defeated Goliath, it was the size of his God. So Samuel was gonna make a mistake. And in verse. Seven of First Samuel chapter sixteen. The Bible says, but the Lord said unto Samuel, look not on his countenance or on the height of his stature. Because I have refused him, for the Lord said, not as man see it, but man look at all the outward appearance, for the Lord look at on the hands. And many have made this mistake. They will just look on the outward, it says, yes, God does not look at the outward. God looks at what? The inside. I see, and that is how, I've taken time to explore this because we're gonna make the first prayer. Spiritual sensitivity. I know this is a prayer session and maybe you you expected me to just pray, no, I wanted to get an understanding. Spiritual sensitivity, you see, there are men that have, that have the form of godliness, but they are not god, may you not make mistakes. I have heard stories, uh uh some days ago, myself and my wife, we 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 were still having a discussion about some of these things, how some people made mistakes. They go into the marriage and they discover something else, which was totally different from what they were expecting. You know, the Bible says that Satan is turned into an angel of light. So he's not looking like darkness, he's not looking like light, he's not like, but he's looking like light. You know, you hear people who say shine your eyes before you marry, but let me tell you something, don't just shine your eyes, shine your spirit. I want you to lift up your voice and begin to pray, that in the name of Jesus. My spirit man is sharp to be able to pick things beyond what the eyes sees in the name of Jesus. My eyes pop open, my spiritual eyes pop open in the name of Jesus. I want you to begin to pray that the spirit of God begins to help you to see things. Let it be an activation of your spiritual side to see things beyond the physical eyes. That no matter how hidden they are, no matter how things appear. That beyond how they appear, the Holy Spirit will help you to see, the Holy Spirit will help you to know. The Bible says that the power of glory may give to you the spirit of wisdom in the, and revelation in the knowledge of it. That the eyes of your understanding might be open, that the eyes of your understanding might be open. It's such as open the eyes of my heart, Lord, lift up your voice and begin to pray and say, Lord, I will not miss it maritally. I will not miss it maritally, I will not miss it maritally, my eyes, my eyes pop open, my spiritual eyes pop open. To see things beyond the physical, to see things and not things beyond what the physical eyes see. No matter how ve- no matter how covered, no matter how a person decides to hide themselves. The Holy Spirit will reveal this to me in the name of Jesus. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. This is a very important prayer. Because you see, even after you watch it for the first time, I wanted to go over this again. Spiritual sensitivity one, that your spiritual eyes will pop open. You remember that when Jesus was at the well, he was able to see things about that particular woman. Things that nobody told him. In First Corinthians chapter twelve, the Bible spoke about extensively, in in a way, about the gift of the spirit. And one of the gifts is First Corinthians twelve is the gift of the word of God, the ability to know things. The supernatural ability to know things that has happened or things that are happening. That's it, many people have met people, see, it's not just about getting married, it is that you will not even miss it in marriage. But you see, some people have gotten married, why? Because the brother or the sister appeared to be a good person. They did this, they did that and all that, and they get into marriage and they they started seeing something else. So you're gonna make that prayer again, that Lord. Everyone that comes around me, help me to be sharp spiritually. No matter what they decide to hide about themselves, help me to be sharp spiritually. There might be things that you will just speak in your spirit. The Bible spoke about how we know in the inward witness, the inward witness of the spirit, the inward witness of the spirit. It might just pick things in your spirit or it may even be in your dreams or however it will be, that the Lord will show you things concerning people. That you will not be dull, you will not be blind spiritually, lift up your voice and begin to pray. That you will know things, that you will see things about people beyond the physical, beyond the physical, beyond the physical. The Bible says that Satan has turned himself to an angel of light, but in the name of Jesus, you will not miss it, you will not be blind spiritually. In the name of Jesus, begin to declare, say in the name of Jesus, my spirit man is sharp to pick things about people. My spirit man is sharp to pick things about events, I am not blind spiritually, in the name of Jesus. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. I pray for you in the mighty name of Jesus. You see, that brother or that sister, that we, that we want to deceive you. With a form of godliness, but with no true godliness, that the Holy Spirit will help your spirit man to stay sharp. To be to be able to pick things about, because this is where many people have missed it. You will not miss it in the name of Jesus. Want us to look at proverbs. If you can pray in Holy Ghost, just pray along. Proverbs, Proverbs chapter thirty from verse five to six. Trust in the Lord with all your hearts and lean not on your own understanding. In all thy ways acknowledge him and he shall direct your paths, trust in the Lord. You see. The reason many people, many single or married people or those who are even married and have made wrong decision. The reason why it is so or it was so is because many have not learned to trust God. So we ignore the leading of God, we ignore the instruction of God. I remember many, many years ago, you know, many people, at at least especially for the singles and they are married right now, watching this. If you ask a man, a guy or a lady, they will tell you the spec, the kind of person they want. They want this brother to be tall, dark, light-skinned, they want the sister to be slim, plus size. Tall, average, I know, we, we all have spec. And I'm not saying it is wrong. But may your desire not lead you away from the will of God for your life. Let me say that again, now let me pray, may your desire not lead you away from the will of God for your life. Trust in the Lord, sometimes God will lead us in ways that might not make sense to us. You see, but because you know that God is a better judge. He's a better judge, he's the one that can judge matters, and he knows, he knows what you need, even more than you, you must learn to trust him. So you're going to lift up your voice, so Holy Spirit, help me to trust you more. Help me not to ignore your leading, to ignore your will, to ignore your instruction. I surrender my desires, I surrender my preferences, in the name of Jesus, lift up your voice and begin to pray. You know, like Jesus said, Jesus said, let this cup of suffering pass, he said, nevertheless, not my will, but your will be done, but your will be done. We cannot have his will while we're still holding on to our will, so Holy Spirit, help me to be able to surrender my will. Help me, give me the grace to surrender totally to you, give me the grace to trust you. Give me the grace to follow your leading, in this pursuit of my marital destiny, in this marital adventure. Help me, Lord, to be able to trust you, help me to surrender my will totally to you, help me not to ignore your instruction. The Bible says, and you will hear it one behind you, say, this is the way walk in it, this is the way walking in, the Bible says, it will teach you to profit, pray, pray, pray. And lead you in the way that you should go, you cannot go in his way if you don't trust in his law for you. Lift up your voice, say, Holy Spirit, help me not to disobey instructions, help me not to ignore your instructions. Help me not to ignore your leaders, help me to trust you more. Trust in the Lord with all your heart, with all your heart, so Holy Spirit, help me not to be full of myself. Help me not to be full of myself, help me, Lord, not to be so clinging, not to, not to stay so glued to my preferences. Help me not to stay so glued to my desires, that I miss your will, help me not to ignore your instructions, help me to trust you more. Help me to follow your leading, the Bible says, for as many as are led by the Spirit, they have the source of God. For as many as are governed by the Spirit. In the name of Jesus Christ, help me, Lord. These things that we're saying, these are very, very important. I pray for you in the mighty name of Jesus. That your desires will not lead you away from the will of God. I pray for you in the name of Jesus, that you will not ignore instructions that God will give you. Let me share this with you. Before I could marry. You know, sometimes we can. We can be so attached. To what we want, it is okay to have desire, have spec. Plan. But see, whatever you do, always leave room for the involvement of God and interruption of God. Never be so attached to anything. Spec, the kind of person you want, never be so attached to where, the kind of person, where you want the person to be living. Never be so attached to anything that the Holy Ghost cannot interrupt. That is how many people have, they have idols in their hearts. God has brought. You know, I remember somebody was telling me how, somebody, a particular lady met a brother. Who ticked all the boxes, you know, you know, we have, okay, I want it to be this, okay, tick, I want it to be this, tick, I want it to be this, tick. There was only one, why the sister said no? Because the brother doesn't have beards. I would have loved to say something in my language, my native language, but let me say this, you will not be unfortunate in life. I say, you will not be unfortunate in life. Because of beards, a very good man who ticked all the other boxes. Now, I'm not saying you should, don't desire a man that has beards. You know, beards, beards that some people have cut. Oh, glory to God. Don't be so attached to anything. So attached that even God can have a will. You know, many times we sing. Have your way, Lord. Have your way. Have your way, Lord. Have your way. We sing that God should have his will. But in our plans, he can't have his will, because we are too attached to our wills. He can't have his will because we are too attached to our desires, he can't have his will because we are so attached to our will. Whatever you've been attached to. That has become the entrance in, in progressing maritally. This day I declare that let the Holy Ghost detach you from such, in the name of Jesus. I know the Holy Ghost detach you from such. You know what I was saying before, I was serving my wife, God married. I moved to a place for mission work, a new place, which was less developed than where I, I was staying before. And one day, the Holy Spirit directed me to, you know, I was formerly in full-time pastoring before. It's called fully into mission work, and an apostolic assignment will go from places to places, training and helping churches and all that. And so when I got to the, the Holy Spirit led me to go to a particular church. And I'm like, ah, no, no, I'll go to that church. For whatever it is, I'm just saying, you know, some people, I won't go there, now, I'm not saying you should go to a church where the doctrine of Christ. Or you are not growing, that's not what I'm saying. But I'm talking about living your life in a way that God can interrupt. God can interrupt. Trust in him, because if you don't trust him, you ignore his instructions. That's why we ignore, because we don't trust him. Let me show you. Isaiah chapter fifty-four. Isaiah fifty-four, verse seventeen. The Bible says, very common scripture. No weapon that is formed against you shall prosper. And every tongue that rise against you in judgment, thou shall condemn. This is the heritage of the servants of the Lord. And their righteousness is of me, said the Lord. No weapon that is formed against you shall what? Shall prosper. I pray for you in the name of Jesus. Whatever that kind of weapon is, whatever the enemy has been arranging. That has kept you at a spot, not to progress marital, in your marital venture or destiny. I counsel and I come against such weapon right now in the name of Jesus. Whatever has been stopping you, we no longer be able to stop you. Every storm, every siege that has held you down. I come against it right now in the name of Jesus, the Bible says, surely they must gather, but because their gathering is not of him, they shall fall. Everyone and anything that has gathered against your destiny, that you will not progress maritally. I declare in the name of Jesus, let them begin to fall, let them begin to fall, lift up your voice and begin to declare, let them begin to fall. Everything, everyone, any event, anything that the enemy has arranged against my destiny, not to progress maritally. I come against you in the name of Jesus. The Bible says in some chapter, chapter one oh seven, it says, let the redeemed of the Lord say so, whom he has delivered from the heads of the enemy. You must learn to say, you must learn to speak, you must learn to pray, whatsoever you desire, when you pray, lift up your voice and begin to declare. Everything that the enemy has arranged or assigned against my destiny, not to progress maritally. I come against you right now, I judge you right now in the name of Jesus, I judge you right now in the name of Jesus. I condemn you right now in the name of Jesus, you will not, you no longer exist, you cease to be in the name of Jesus. The storm is over in the name of Jesus, the siege is over in the name of Jesus. And every tongue that rises against you in judgment, you shall condemn, you shall condemn. Lift up your voice and begin to condemn, lift up your voice and begin to nullify, lift up your voice and begin to annoy, lift up your voice and begin to judge. Lift up your voice and begin to say it is over, in the name of Jesus, I am making progress. The Bible says, in the book of Proverbs, chapter four, verse eighteen, the path of the just is as a shining light, that shines more and more. In the name of Jesus, declare with me, I'm making progress maritally, in the name of Jesus, I'm making progress maritally. In this year twenty twenty-three, I shall be set to maritally, I shall be set to maritally, I shall be set to maritally, I shall be set to maritally. Begin to lift up the voice, begin to pray, do not take no for an answer. No weapon formed against me, no weapon formed against me, weapon of mistakes, weapon of whatever it is. In the name of Jesus Christ. Let me share something with you. This, of course, I won't mention him, but she wouldn't mind talk about a particular lady. I'm not even going to talk about two, there was a particular lady that. Whenever she's in a relationship, or sometimes when she's in a relationship, when she gets into a relationship, there is this foul smell. That whoever she's in a relationship with, will start perceiving. It will be so foul that, that, that the person almost, I can't do this again, this is, but you know the funniest. The guy, the brother would be the only one perceiving, everybody else was not perceiving, so you see, it wasn't just. A false smell, it was a false smell with a purpose, the enemy attached that smell. That false smell to her, just for one thing, to chase away brothers that want to get married to her. You see, any other person, no matter who the person, if you are not in a relationship, you will not perceive, but once you get into a relationship with her. You start perceiving that smell, you say, no weapon from the, you're going to lift up your voice again in prayer. I said, Lord, whatever the enemy has attached to my destiny, some people, they will get into relationship. And silly mistakes, mistakes that don't make sense, we just end the relation, whatever it is that has been obstructing. Whatever it is that has been injuring, whatever it is that has been sabotaging my marital destiny. This day, this hour, this minute, let them end, lift up your voice and begin to pray, let them end. Either it is foul smell, mistake, whatever it is, anything that the enemy has been doing, or has assigned to keep you at a spot maritally. Let it end right now, let the shackles be destroyed, let the cycle of defeat, the cycle of marital disappointment. The cycle of marital failure, the cycle of marital disappointment, let it end right now. I declare by the anointing of the Holy Spirit. Everything that the enemy might have assigned to keep you at a spot, not to progress, not to be married. I destroy such right now in the name of Jesus, the cycle of marital disappointment ends right now, in the name of Jesus. The storm ends right now in the name of Jesus, the siege ends right now in the name of Jesus. Whatever weapon or arrow, whatever it is that the enemy might have assigned, I say, it ends right now in the name of Jesus Christ. There are people. That the enemy. Will begin to paint pictures in their hearts, pictures of the failed relationships, of failed marriages in their family. And they tell you, your parents' marriage failed, yours will fail. Your uncle's marriage failed, the enemy will say, yours will fail, your aunt's marriage failed, you say, yours will fail. You see, that is the plan of the enemy, to kill your joy, to steal your faith, but you must not allow. Because whatever happened to them will not be your portion in the name of, your story will be different. Your home will show for the glory of Christ, in the name of Jesus Christ. Let me show you another scripture, we pray, Isaiah forty-nine, verse twenty-five, also pray, Isaiah forty-nine, verse twenty-five. But thus said the Lord, even the captives of the mighty shall be taken away, and the prey of the terrible shall be delivered. For I will contend with them that contend with you. You see, life is spiritual, I tell people something. Never get to the point where. You begin to joke with your life. Life is spiritual, many things we see. I shared recently, a place I said, some people are not lazy. It's life. Some people are not lazy, it's life, some people have good character, it's just life, life is spiritual. I met a particular sister some years ago. She came for a program that we organized, and after the program, while praying with her, I saw some things I shared with her, then I realized that number one. For about six years. That, um. She's finished from school, no job, nothing. Not married, not even in a relationship. But I saw, like, it wasn't ordinary, it was spiritual, prayed with her. So it was around, I think that particular month was maybe June. Now, what I want to say might not happen, there's some people say, okay, you should do it for six months, but I'm sharing about this particular sister, which I saw, it was. The wickedness of the wicked, it was an involvement of wickedness in her life, I prayed with her. Think the month after, also, she going through a relationship, somebody was ready. She was okay, she had a witness in her spirit, they got married, I think November that year, you can't the month, June, July, August, September, October, November, five months. That might not be everybody, praise God. But we agreed together in prayer, and by November, she was married, life is spiritual, for I will contend with them that contend with you. You will lift up your voice in prayer, okay? And say, Lord, I come to you. Lift up your voice, Isaiah, I'm going to be praying in the Holy Spirit. I say, Lord, come to you, whatever has been contending with me. Whatever has been disrupting your plan for my life, your way for my life to be married, Lord, contend with them. Contend with such forces, lift up your voice and begin to pray, Bible says, let the Lord arise and his enemies be scattered, lift up your voice and begin to pray. Lord, contend with them, contend, but thus said the Lord, even the captive of the mighty shall be taken away, and the prey of the terrible shall be delivered. For I will contend with them that contend with you, and we contend with them that contend with you, in the name of Jesus. Let the Lord contend with those forces, contend with your marital destiny, let the Lord contend with those forces, contend with your life, in the name of Jesus. I declare there is no more delay, in the name of Jesus, I declare that you are making progress maritally, in Jesus mighty name we pray. Amen. Amen. I trust by the help. There's a particular sister that will be watching this. I hope, uh, permitted to do this, her stuff, there's a particular sister that will be watching this, the Holy Spirit dropping my heart right now. You've been in a relationship for some years, and suddenly, recently, the brother, no fights. He just said he will, it's no longer, no fight, no longer interested. He just said he will, it's no longer, no fight, no longer interested. God said, I should tell you, it's not because he's on serious. It's an involvement of the wickedness of the wicked. But me kurian dahashi balasi kadoso, very soon, there'll be a ministration of the Spirit of God concerning, there is administration of the Spirit of God concerning the situation right now, very soon, the particular brother will come back. That relationship will be restored. Because your marital life will be settled this same year, even for everyone that is watching this in the name of Jesus Christ. So many things I'll still love to share, but I'm under the leadership of this ministry, and I would like to pray with us before this session will end. Can you just, let's pray together. Father God of all life and grace, I pray for the brother, for the sister who is watching this and has been praying since this started, who is trusting you for a life partner. Who is saying, the Lord, I know that it is your will for me to be married. I pray for such a person, that in this same year twenty twenty-three, you will be settled my destiny in the name of Jesus. The cycle of marital disappointment ends right now in the name of Jesus. I declare that you are not blind spiritually. I declare in the mighty name of Jesus, that your spirit man is sharp to pick things. I declare that you will not be deceived. I declare that you will not be confused. I declare that light shines on the tablet of your hearts. The Bible says do not be anxious for anything. I declare, let that anxiety leave right now. Let that worry leave right now, in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Let light shine in your heart. I declare that you will know where to go, you will know what to do. The Bible says in Colossians, chapter one, it says that you might be filled with the knowledge of his will in all wisdom and spiritual understanding. I declare that you will not confuse, that you are filled with the fullness of God's will, you will know what to do. And the name of the Lord will be praised in your life. In this same year twenty twenty-three, you may settle my destiny in the name of Jesus. I declare that the siege is over. I declare that the storm is over. I declare that there is no more delay. God is glorified in your life. That partner of yours, the bone of your bone and the flesh of your flesh. I declare a divine connection right now in the name of Jesus. I declare a divine connection right now in the name of Jesus. As it was in the valley of the dry bones, as bones came together, bones came together. So also I declare, concerning the brother watching this or the sister watching this right now, let your life partner begin to join to you right now, in the mighty name of Jesus. I declare by the anointing of the Holy Spirit, that it will be miracles back to back for you. And the name of the Lord will be praised forever in your life, in Jesus' name. Father, we thank you for this time. We give you praise. None of me, but all of you, will know that there will be harvests of answers concerning these prayers. And your name will be praised forevermore, in Jesus' name. Amen. God bless you.
Glory, glory, glory be to God. Thank you Pastor Shergu. I'm very grateful for this opportunity, privileged to have you here. Thank you so much. The Lord will bless you, his answer will be upon you. And your marriage will be a reflection of the glory of God, in Jesus' name, amen. Before my wife comes up, who is going to be praying for us as well? At my lovely wife, and by the grace of God, this month for us is very special because this month makes it exactly six years, six years that we did our church, our church wedding. And we did our tradition some years, some years ago, it's going to be seven years. But officially, it just is six years, because we did our white wedding in twenty seventeen. So our tradition will be eight years this year. And because we did our tradition in twenty fifteen, and we did our white wedding in twenty seventeen. So this year, this month, on the twenty-fifth, will make it exactly six years since we got married officially. And yeah, that was when things began to happen officially, to the glory of God. So this month is very special for us, and I want you all to help me say thank you to my wife. If you can type in the comment section, help me tell her thank you for support. She's a different woman, she's a wonderful woman, and I'm grateful to God for her life. And this just wants to use to also encourage other men. Give your wife the opportunity she needs. Since the time we began praying with me, my wife had always been, always been there. She's there as every other guest to lead us in prayer. And I get that space for her, she has to be there, there together. So thank you so much, I really appreciate you. So before I hand over to her, we need to pray. We need to pray. The Bible says in the book of John, it said, "And the light shines in darkness, and darkness comprehended it not." The light shines in darkness, and darkness cannot overcome it. The reason why we are confused in the journey of marriage to decide what to marry is because there is darkness, there is darkness. You can't see, if it's dark, you cannot see, you can't fake it. But I'm praying for you this month, this night, as you pray this prayer, the light of God will shine in you, on you, and on you. And darkness will fade away. Let every other name fade away. Let every other name fade away. Till that's only you. Let every other name fade away. Let every other name, let every darkness fade away. Till it's only the light of the Lord that is shining. You're going to pray, I say, Father, let your light shine on me. Let it shine in me, let it shine around me. And cause every darkness bringing me confusion on this decision of marriage to fade away. Let every darkness disappear, let them fade away. In the name of Jesus, in the name of Jesus. Every darkness fade away around your people. Thank you, mighty Father. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Put your right hand on your head and accept me. Say, dear Lord, from today, in the name of Jesus, I receive grace to see clearly. I receive grace to hear clearly, in the name of Jesus. The light of God is shining on me, the light of God is shining on me, it's shining around me. I am no longer confused, in the name of Jesus. I am not confused, I am not confused, I'm not confused. I am making informed decisions, in the name of Jesus. No more trial and error in my life, in my marital journey. No more trial and error, in the name of Jesus. The next relationship I'm getting into, the Lord is directing me, in the name of Jesus. Thank you, mighty Father, in Jesus' name we pray, amen. If someone listens to me now, you're in a wrong relationship, and you know. That wrong relationship that you are in will hinder the person, the person that God has prepared for you. The word of the Lord from me to you today is, let the person go. Yes, you know, let him, let him go, let the person go. Don't try to patch it, it, you know already. You do not need a prophet to tell you this, you know it already, that this person is nuts, from all indication. Let the person go, go back to the place of prayer, and let God perfect it for you. Go back to the place of prayer, and let God perfect it for you. I hope that makes sense. All right, I'll be calling up on my wife now to lead us in prayer, and then when she's done, we'll be saying goodbye until next month. Let me announce to us, next month we're having twelve hours, twelve hours prayer. It's a yearly twelve hours prayer that we do. So this year's on, it's on the seventeenth to the eighteenth. It starts at seven P M Pacific Standard Time, that's nine P M Central Standard Time, and then ten P M Eastern Standard Time. And that's about, that's about eight hours different from Africa. That's in West African time would be, West Africa that would be, okay, would be three A M, from three A M West African Standard Time. So twelve good hours, three A M to three P M for West Africa. For those who are going to watch from Nigeria or other part of West Africa. And I think that's also the same time for people from London, Eastern Europe, and I hope this blesses all. So please get prepared. God has prepared a lot of verses to be used by God, by him, that period. So please don't miss it. All right, let me invite my wife, and she leads us in the next prayer point, prayers, and then a show. I know, this year, God will set to you my destiny, in Jesus' name. If you have not subscribed to this channel, you can do so now, subscribe, and then share this video with people. Let them be part of this, and I bless you, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you for your goodness, thank you for your goodness. Everybody, can you raise your hands and say, Lord, thank you for your goodness. Thank you for your goodness that never runs out. Thank you for your goodness that never runs out, Jesus. Thank you for your goodness that never runs out, hallelujah. I love your voice. You have led me through the fire, in my darkest night. You are closer than no other. I've known you as a father, and I've known you as a friend. And I have lived in the goodness of God. Everybody, can you raise your hand and say, all my life.
All my life you have been faithful.
All my life you have been good.
All my life you have been so, so good. With every prayer that I have made.
Lord, I will sing.
I will sing of the goodness.
Come on, can you raise your hands right now, and say, Jesus, all my life.
All my life you have been faithful.
Thank you for your faithfulness, all my life. Hey, you have been so, so good. With every prayer.
Every prayer that I have made.
Lord, I will sing. Once more time, with our hands lifted up to heaven. Thank you for your faithfulness, say, all my life.
All my life you have been faithful.
Yes, you have.
All my life you have been so.
So, so good. With every prayer.
Every prayer that I have made.
Oh, I will sing.
Oh, I will sing of the goodness of God.
Say, I love you, Lord.
I love you, Lord. For your mercy never fails me. All my days, I've been held in your hand. From the moment that I wake up.
The moment that I wake up.
Till I lay my head, I will sing of the goodness of God.
I love your voice.
Your voice. You have led me through the fire, in darkest nights. You are closer than no other.
Have you known him as a father, raise your hand as a father. Thank you for being my father.
Known you as a friend. And I have lived in the goodness of God.
Everybody raise your hand and please say, all my life.
All my life you have been faithful.
Thank you, Jesus.
Hello, good morning, good afternoon, and good evening. Welcome to another session of Pray With Me, February two thousand and twenty-three. Look, I'm so happy and privileged to be here once again. I don't take this opportunity lightly every time I'm able to be here. I count it as an honor and I see it as a privilege, because anyone could be here, anyone could be sitting here. But I'm grateful to God for what he's doing, how he's using this platform. And I salute our very own great Father, great husband himself. Mister, pastor, Ayote, Jani Fosha, thank you for all that you do. And thank you for praying for the singles, because that's what we're going to be praying about today. Today, we are going to be lifting up our singles into the hands of the Lord. We prayed about them last month. So if you are a single and you want prayers, the prayers of God, the prayers of the saints to be raining down on you, make sure you go and check out January Pray With Me session. And we're going to take it again today. Today, we're going to be praying once again for the singles. And so I just want us to begin to thank God for all that he's done in the life of every single person. You know, we're all born single, right? We're all born as singular, individual, unique creatures, beings, human beings. And no matter, even if we were a part of a multiple's birth, even everyone is still a unique and distinct individual person to the glory of God. And so everybody starts off as a single. Nobody starts off married, nobody starts off with children, you know, as everybody starts off as a single human being. And so we're going to pray for the singles, you know, from being a single, you can go into, you know, getting married and start in a family, but you start off as a one singular individual. And so we're going to be praying for those people in that category today. All of us, like we said, we started off. All of us, like we said, um were started off as singles. And there are things that one has to get right, or it, it, it behooves. Every single person to get it right, you know, in your, in, in, in the time of being single. There's some key important things that one needs to get right. It just makes life easier when you uh enter marriage. Um and so we're gonna be lifting up our singles today, so let's just begin to thank God for every single. Let's just thank God for every person um under the sound of heaven, that's everybody, and we're all singles, right? And so uh even though we get married, you know, we all start off as singles. So we're gonna thank God for every single person, every single person. Um out there, if you're watching, you're single, I thank God for you, I thank God for your life. I thank God for all that the Lord is doing in your life. I give God praise uh because of his uh plans and purposes in your life and for your life. I worship you, Lord Jesus Christ, for the, for, for when, for the idea that you would create. Individual people that would become joined and united with uh another person in marriage. But uh I just thank you, Father, for that, I thank you and I give you praise, I exalt your holy name, you are worthy. Thank you for every single that is watching right now, every single that has joined us, you know, in this session. Every single that has been here from the beginning, uh or joined at any point, Lord, we thank you. We thank for the life, lives of every single person, every person in the name of Jesus Christ. I thank you, Lord, because you know, before I had the opportunity to get married, I was a single. So I know what that period was like, I know what that season was like. I thank you for my single season, there are things that I was able to do at that time, I'm no longer able to do that now. Because it's a different season, but I thank God for the blessing of the, the, the single season. You know, that I enjoyed, that I had the privilege of enjoying. And those who are single, that they have the privilege, they have time, they have responsive, you know, they have. Uh the less responsibility, you know, in terms of other people. Lord, I just thank you, Lord, for every single, I mean, maybe they might have it in their careers. But uh you know, in terms of family, you know, nuclear family that they're responsible for as a single, you don't have that. And so you have a little bit more flexibility with what you do with your time, what you do with your resources and so on. So I thank God for that season, that season is important, that season is special, that season is beautiful. That season is not to be looked down upon, that season is important. And I thank you, Lord Jesus Christ, in Jesus mighty name, I have prayed, amen, amen, amen. Um you know, when I think about my own season, when I was single, my single season. Um there were a lot of things that I was able to, to do, a lot of things that I was able to take advantage of. You know, a lot of ways that I was able to plug in um into God. Into, you know, the local church, into ministry, um things that I, I was able to do easily and freely. Um and so the single season is not a season to be looked down upon. Even if, you know, you feel that, oh, you've been in this season for a while, or maybe it's a long one. Um it's still, it's still a blessed season. And so um I want us to, to, to uh make sure that we never look down on, on this season. Um and so we thank God for, for every, every young person, every single, um to the glory of God, amen. Amen, amen. Now, I want us to talk about, we hear a lot of things having to do with um. Self-care, self-care is a, is a huge thing nowadays, right? Self-care, self-care is a popular thing. Um when we think about self-care these days, we think about um. Uh you know, you think about rest, right? You think about self-care, you think about, you know, relaxing and maybe going to the spa. Or maybe, you know, if you're, if you're female, getting your nails done and getting your hair done and, you know, pampering yourself. We think of those things when you think of self-care. If you're a male, um you know, getting a good workout in or, you know, just hanging out with the guys or, you know. So there, there's, there's a lot of uh hype around self-care. And um nothing, nothing wrong with self-care. I think a lot of times there is the, the, the hype around it. Uh can, can be so much that the, at the end of the day. Uh it becomes like an idol, but we won't get into that. Um but self-care is important, self-care is important. You can not give what you don't have, you can't give what you don't have. And as a single person, um it's important to take care of your whole self. So I'm gonna be talking about what I'm terming uh biblical self-care. Because I think that there are things that we can do in our single season. To really care for the whole self. And when I say self-care, I mean care for the whole self, for the whole self, the whole self. Body, mind, body, soul, spirit and so on. I mean, I'm not talking about the surface level, going on a vacation, tho- those things are important, getting rest, very, very important. But I'm talking about taking care of your whole self, just because you go on a vacation for a week and it's super relaxing and all that. But if it's chaos at home, when you come back home, it's still gonna be chaos, right? So uh you would have had a reprieve for a week, but then you're coming back to chaos. But I wanna talk about biblical self-care, which I think is um a holistic view of our mind, body and spirit. Our mind, body, um and soul. And the Bible says in the book of third John one two, it's a popular scripture. It says, beloved, I wish above all things that thou mayst prosper and be in health. Even as thy soul prospers. So we see right there that, you know, God's um design and his plan and his purpose for us is to prosper. To prosper in our physical body, to prosper in our spirits, to prosper in our souls. So every part of our existence, the Lord desires and plans and purposes. For us to prosper in them. And I believe that um you know, as we care or we talk about biblical self-care here today. I'm gonna really try to cover as much as we possibly can. Um the full body and soul aspect of ourselves, ourselves. And um you know, because the thing is when you, if you can do the legwork as a single person. What you're bringing into a marriage, if that's something that you desire to go into. You're gonna be bringing um value when you work on yourself. And you make sure that your whole self is cared for, properly cared for. Then you go into a marriage whole, right? You're not bringing a partial or a half or, you know, an incomplete self. You're bringing a whole self that is full of lots of value. And um you know, so the, the different kinds of self-care, some of which will uh biblical self-care. Which will coincide in some ways with the kind of self-care that we hear about in society today. But then there are gonna be some things that are a little bit different. Um and so the first thing is rest for the body, the Bible is clear, right? So that um we need rest, it's clear, it's not, there's nothing. I mean, it, it, the Bible was so keen about that, that it said even the land needed rest. You know, one of the things that God got angry with the Israelites is because they didn't allow the land to rest. And so then he forced the land into rest by, by, by getting them out of the land so that the land could rest. So if the land needs to rest, how much more we human beings need to rest. So rest for the body is important, it's critical, it's important and it's critical. We're gonna pray today, um the Bible says in Genesis two verse two, it says, on the seventh day, God finished his work of creation. So he rested from all his work, I want us to pray today. You know, in our society today, there's this idea, there's this theme that's, that wants to tell us that. We don't need rest, but that is counter, that's counterproductive. Uh and that's counter scripture, the Bible tells us that we need rest, we need rest, on the seventh day, God rested. So you can go for six days and then after the sixth day, you need to rest. You know, so if you're going, if you thirteen, fourteen days, you've been working thirteen, fourteen days, haven't had a break, haven't slept, and that's not God's design. And so I want us to pray today, maybe, I don't know who is, has that kind of a crazy schedule. You know, that, you know, they did, they gotta go, 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 that their life has no rest. And we know that there are seasons where we get less rest. Uh you know, I, I'm in a season like that because I have young children, uh I have a nursing baby. So uh she wakes up in the middle of the night to eat and that interrupts my rest. But that's certainly not something that I wanna do uh forever, right? And so we're just gonna pray that, you know, for any of us that might be in a season where we're not getting rest. That the rest, the kind of rest that we, that God designed us to get, that the Lord will give us rest. He will make, you know, ways for us to have a rest, physical rest. I'm talking, you remember, we're praying about singles. And you know, if you, if you establish this, you know, as a single, you establish these um uh practices and cultures. For yourself, then you bring, you bring that into the marriage as well. So we pray, I'm praying today, I don't know about you or, I need rest, I need physical rest, you know. Because sometimes the responsibilities are much, but we're gonna pray, Lord, for everyone watching here today. That needs physical rest, I want to pray especially also for the singles. You know, that you can establish this so that when you, when you come into a marriage and you start to build a family. These, those same ideals, those same principles, you know, you'll be able to build your family upon them in the name of Jesus Christ. Father, I pray for anyone out there, you know, who has a ridiculous job for any reason. Uh where the hours are crazy and doesn't allow them to get adequate rest. I pray today you will deliver them from that schedule in the name of Jesus Christ. And I pray for each and every one of us, oh Lord, that we will, we will have rest. We will have access to rest, that our, we will, that will make time in our schedules, that will make time in our lives to be able to rest. You know, because that was your original design, in the name of Jesus Christ. We will never, we won't live our life running on fumes in the name of Jesus Christ. That even as we rest, Lord, that will be restored, that will be refreshed, that will be renewed in the name of Jesus. That our physical bodies, Lord, will have rest in the name of Jesus Christ. So that we can ward off even sicknesses, you know, when we sleep, that's when our body repairs itself. That's when our body does all kind of work, digestion, all those kinds of things. So if you don't get the rest, when is your body gonna repair? When is your gonna, body gonna, you know, renew, rejuvenate itself? In the name of Jesus Christ, Father, all of us, all of us, everyone, anyone here watching today. We will have access to rest in the mighty name of Jesus, because that was your design. I pray, Lord, and it maybe I, maybe it's because of me, maybe because of the way that I've structured my day. And maybe my understanding, whatever, whatever the reasoning might be, Lord, in the name of Jesus Christ. Help me, oh God, help me, oh God, help those of us watching to, and to be able to enjoy good rest. In the mighty name of Jesus Christ. I will have rest, I will have physical rest, so my body, so my organs can be refreshed and renewed and restored. So that my youth can be renewed in the name of Jesus Christ, so that I don't age before my time, in the name of Jesus Christ. So that I'm not subject to all manner of sicknesses and diseases, in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. For some of us, all we just needed was rest, my lega dosi, in the name of Jesus Christ. Father Lord, open up our schedules, open up our lives, open up our programs to ensure that we fit in rest. As appropriate in the name of Jesus Christ, in Jesus's name we pray, amen and amen. Amen, you know, it's one thing for our bodies to be able to rest. It's another thing for our minds to rest. We're gonna pray about rest of mind, or another way to say that is peace of mind. Um Bible tells us um in, in um, in uh. For uh second Timothy one seven, sorry, I was trying to find it, second Timothy one seven, the Bible says. For God has not given us a spirit of fear, but of power, of love and a sound mind. You know, I shared this on my channel before, I did a study on rest. And I remember there was one day I said, oh, today I'm gonna rest. And I laid down on my bed, but there were so many things running on in my head, there was no rest for, I was laying in the bed, but I was not resting. Because my mind was going one hundred miles an hour. And I discovered that you can't fully, you can't really get full appropriate rest if your mind is not at rest. But thank God, he said he didn't give us a spirit of fear, but of power, of love and a sound mind. The truth is, what I was, what was not allowing me to rest at that time was some certain fears. Because I had a big project coming up that week and I, you know, I was afraid that I wasn't gonna be able to adequately prepare. For that assignment, for that project. And so that was messing up my mind, but I want us to pray, the Lord will free us from every kind of fear. The Bible says he, he's not giving us a spirit of fear, but of power, of love and a sound mind. I want us to pray that we are, we are free from fear, the fears that pop up into our heads. In the name of Jesus, the Lord has already given us, he has already um given us a spirit that overcomes fear. That we have nothing to fear, we have nothing to fear, there's nothing that makes me afraid, in the name of Jesus Christ. Every situation in our life that's staring us in the face, that wants to make us fear, that wants to make us tremble. In the name of Jesus Christ, the Lord has not given us a spirit of fear, he has not given me a spirit of fear. So it doesn't matter how great the situation is staring at me in the face, I have nothing to fear. For the single people, maybe, maybe something keep you up at night, maybe something that on your mind that's not allowing you to have a rest. Is the fact that you're single, that fact that you wanna get married, in the name of Jesus Christ, there is no cause for fear, there's no cause for alarm. In the name of Jesus Christ, he's not giving us a spirit of fear but of power, uh not a spirit of fear but of power. Not a spirit of fear but of love, not a spirit of fear but a sound mind. I decree a sound mind to every single watching in the name of Jesus Christ, a sound mind. The fact that marriage has not come uh up into this point doesn't mean it's never gonna come. The Lord is giving you a sound mind in the mighty name of Jesus, a sound mind. He's saying he's not giving us a spirit of fear but of power, in the mighty name of Jesus. I want us to pray those three things spec- specifically, that the Lord will empower you. He's giving you a spirit of power, not a spirit of fear, in the name of Jesus Christ. I pray, Lord, oh Father Lord, empower our spirits today, empower our spirits today. Oh Father Lord, empower the spirits of everyone watching today, every single, oh Lord, out there. Father, empower their spirits, strengthen them in the name of Jesus Christ, strengthen them for what's coming. Strengthen them for the marriage that's coming, strengthen them for the, 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 whatever issues and challenges that are coming. Strengthen them, oh Lord, for life that is coming ahead. Strengthen them, Lord, strengthen them, Lord, in Jesus's name we pray. The Lord is not giving us a spirit of fear, but of power and love. I want us to pray, that spirit of love will overwhelm every single, in the name of Jesus. That spirit of love will overwhelm us, in the name of Jesus, that spirit of fear will overwa- it will overtake. That spirit, sorry, that spirit of love, spirit of love, the spirit of love will overwhelm us, in the name of Jesus, that spirit. the spirit of love will overwhelm us in the name of jesus that spirit of love will overwhelm every single that even when people look at you you know they'll just love you because of the spirit of love that is inside of you in the name of jesus christ father lord let love fill the hearts of every single that your love will permeate the hearts of every single and the lives of every single that even that love that aspect of love will make them even so 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 irresistible in the name of jesus christ that everyone that comes around them just wants more of the love they just want to feel the love in the mighty name of jesus christ father fill every heart with your spirit of love in the mighty name of jesus in jesus name we pray amen now the bible says he's not giving us the spirit of fear but of power love and a sound mind I want us to pray ah for every single out there the lord gives you a sound mind the lord is giving you a sound mind your mind is sound your mind is sound nothing like depression nothing like eh what's the other one suicidal thoughts nothing like that nothing like sadness nothing like anger your mind is sound in the name of jesus christ no it's not the marriage issue is not gonna push you into depression or any other issue won't push you into depression in the mighty name of jesus your mind is sound because your spirit is powerful and you're filled with so much love so your mind is sound in the name of jesus christ father father cause our minds to be sound give us peace of mind in the name of jesus christ every single also here lord we ask oh god give every single peace of mind peace of mind peace of mind a sound mind in the mighty name of jesus in jesus mighty name we pray amen amen you know he's he he has allowed us to be free from fear and free also from worry and anxiety you know there are many things these days that can cause us worry and anxiety but the truth is bible says in luke twelve twenty five it says who of you by worrying can add a single hour to your life worrying does nothing in fact worrying cannot add to your life but it certainly can take away because worrying um eats at time the time you spend worrying you could have spent that time doing something else more much more productive redeeming your time but rather you spent it worrying but in the name of jesus he's freeing of freeing us from every kind of worry every kind of uh anxiety in the name of jesus christ just begin to declare that over your life that in the name of jesus christ I am free from worry I'm free from anxiety in the name of jesus christ I'm free from worry I'm free from anxiety in the mighty name of jesus christ I have nothing to worry about the my cares and my burdens I've casted them onto the lord he said cast your cares unto me for I care for you I don't have a care in the world now that I don't have it but I've casted it at god's feet I've casted it at the feet of jesus christ he cares for me he cares for my cares in fact he died for my cares in the name of jesus christ so I have nothing to fear I exchanged the anxiety the worry and I gave it to him on the cross when he came up when he rose again he he can he he overcame every kind of worry every kind of anxiety there's I have nothing to worry about in the name of jesus in jesus mighty name we pray amen now remember we're talking about biblical self-care for the single biblical self-care for the single obviously these things uh also apply to anybody but like I said we're all singles right and then um we're all born singles and then we by god's grace you know he he allows us to enter into marriage but we're still single individual people but we're talking about we're praying about singles and one of the things nowadays is with the advent of social media it has caused us to live a life of comparison but I argue that one of the biblical self-care techniques that that every single should have um is contentment 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 with exactly where you are not complacent with where you are but content with that yes you have a car it's not a ferrari it's a toyota but it works it drives you it gets the job done I don't need a ferrari right now if god take me to that level amen if he doesn't take me to that level amen where I am now I'm good I'm happy with where I am in the name of jesus maybe you have a one bedroom apartment studio apartment it's for where for where you are right now it is good it is good may the lord give us godliness bible says godliness with contentment is great gain what makes your contentment anything good is the fact that god is in it I want us to pray for the singles out there that social media will not deceive you you be seeing marriage goals and this go relationship goes that be content with where you are be content with may the lord give you contentment as he as he comes into your situation as he comes into exactly where you are he will give you contentment in the name of jesus that content you can't buy that even married people will be looking at you and say ah I mean this one is just happy with who where she is with who she is you know with who he is and where he is in the name of jesus christ may he give you contentment may he give us contentment in the mighty name of jesus christ I pray oh lord for our singles out there in the name of jesus christ content with the current season you're in knowing that this season is not gonna last forever you know at the right time at the appropriate time at the set time when is time when the time is ripe the lord will bring you know your spouse to you in the name of jesus but not a second before that you mu- you must be content with where you are be happy with where you are be happy with what you've achieved what you've been able to do in the name of jesus christ gratefulness thankfulness thanksgiving god loves a cheerful uh somebody who's cheerful somebody who's cheerful he loves that he loves a heart that is cheerful and happy you know with you know we know we trust in god we believe in god for what he's gonna do we believe in him for miracles we want him to do this we want him to do that yes definitely but in the name of jesus christ father we are content I pray in the name of jesus every single out there who has been disturbed about marriage may the lord give you contentment in the name of jesus may he give you content yeah he give you contentment if you're happy with who you are then you wait then you bring that into the marriage you you'll be able to bring your contentment with who you are to su- and join that with somebody else in the name of jesus may he give you contentment may he give you contentment may he and may he come into your situation and allow you to be content with where you are with what you've done you know in the name of jesus christ obviously I mean you know if if you're doing evil don't be content with that but you know content with what you with with what you've been able to achieve in life even though maybe it's not as much as what someone else has achieved or you're a manager at your office but you you have a friend who's a director you have you know you guys both worked for two years somebody else got promoted you you know just be 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 content be content with where the lord has knowing that the lord is working things out he's working things out in the name of jesus christ he's working things out so father lord I pray oh god may that spirit of contentment come over every single in the name of jesus christ that spirit of contentment with the single season being content in this season being content in this season that you're content with what you're able to do with what you have in the name of jesus christ in jesus mighty name I pray amen amen and so again we're talking about self-care right and these are things that um as a single person that if you can really care for the whole self that every aspect you talked about the body we talked about the mind we talked about the spirit you know being content with your atti- your attitude and your outlook on life if you come if you care for your body care for your soul in that way care for your spirit in that way you're gonna be so much better a person going into marriage in the name of jesus excuse me another self-care now this this may not make sense to everyone but I believe that another self-care tip is to acquire wisdom acquire wisdom that's a self-care tip the bible to let me let me read the book of proverbs one verses twenty to twenty-three it says wisdom shouts in the streets she cries out in the public square she calls to the crowds along the main street to those gathered in front of the city gate how long you simpletons will you insist on being simple minded how long will you mockers relish your mocking how long will you fools hate knowledge come and listen to my counsel I'll share my heart with you and make you wise I believe one of the 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 critical things that you can do as a single person is to acquire wisdom acquire wisdom get wisdom get wisdom acquire wisdom bible says wisdom cries out in the public square she's there she's shouting get me you know become wiser listen to me and you become wiser list open your ears and I'll make you wiser that's what she says she cries out in the street so wisdom is out there we need to acquire it we need to acquire that wisdom in the name of jesus christ I'm praying for singles out there this is a self-care remember we're caring for the whole self in the name of jesus christ may the lord give you wisdom in the name of jesus may you get wisdom may you get wisdom may you get wisdom 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 because if you can become a wise person and you take that into a marriage as a single person you're going to marriage as a wise person that is going to help you the bible says a wise woman if you're a single lady a wise woman builds her home so if you're going to marriage with wisdom that god has endowed you with then you're able to build a home you're able to build up you know a a a a a home that establishes a beautiful legacy for children and for generations even to follow may you receive the wisdom of god in the name of jesus christ may you receive the wisdom of god in the name of jesus father I cry out lord the spirit of wisdom may be poured out on our singles in the name of jesus christ give them wisdom 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 wisdom on how to manage people relationships money wisdom 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 how to manage resources how to manage time in the name of jesus father get them wisdom in the name of jesus wisdom wisdom even anyone watching here today may the lord endow you with a spirit of wisdom in the name of jesus a spirit of wisdom sets you apart it sets you apart it makes you distinct the bible says that bezalel he was making the tabernacle of the lord the very first one but it said bible endowed him with a spirit of wisdom so to be able to create so when you have wisdom you can create you can make these beautiful creations that are valuable that are you know you know valuable and beautiful and and expensive and you know they add value to the lives if you come in with a spirit of wisdom you you're adding value to the life of your husband or your wife you're adding value to the lives of your children you're adding value you know to the family to the family name and to the family legacy to the family purse to the family everything in the name of jesus may he give you wisdom I pray for every single out there the lord give you wisdom may he give you wisdom in jesus mighty name we pray amen amen one of the things that we talked about uh last month during our prayer with me cuz we prayed for singles and and um the I would say probably the number one thing that came up on there was this idea of purpose 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 you know uh the bible says in psalm ninety verse fourteen it says satisfy me early 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 it's uh better to receive that god satisfaction god satisfaction early than it is to receive it late and um you know so in your single season that is a better season to be able to find and discover your purpose even than before you even go into marriage you need to because even your purpose will even determine who you should marry it will it will it will weed out certain people I remember somebody came to me one time and said oh I wanna introduce you to somebody and because I had an idea I mean I didn't know everything but I had an idea of where god was taking me to and that person wasn't going in that direction and I said look it's not gonna work don't but don't bother don't even bother because it's not gonna work cuz we're going in two different directions our purposes do not align our purposes do not align I believe that every single needs to find a way to get a hold get a grip of your purpose in life is 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 better and it's better to find it sooner than later because you don't have all the time in the world I wish we had all the time in the world I wish we did but we don't have all the time in the world we really don't know how much time we have so the sooner we find out our purpose the better the better the sooner we find it out the the sooner we can begin working it we're working it bible says in john nine four I like to use jesus as a as the ultimate example when I think of you know I I think of biblical self-care okay these are all things that jesus had and and he did bible says in john nine verse four it says I must work the works of him who sent me while it is day the night is coming when no one can work so he had a clear picture of his purpose he had a clear picture of his assignment and he knew he really didn't have all day he didn't have all the time in the world to do this assignment and so he was a single incidentally and um he said I gotta I have I must do this work now this is self-care this is let me explain why this is self-care because see we've heard people complain about being in a dead end job being in a dead end job or doing something you know that that's not really what you is that is this all I was created to do when you're in that kinda situation it causes a level and a measure of unrest in your mind it causes a level of unrest in your soul because you know this isn't I I know that there's more to life than this I know that I was I was created for more I know that I was created for more so the funny thing is that when you work your purpose you work you know the you do the work that god has sent you to do it brings fulfillment it brings satisfaction then you'll be able to be at rest then you'll be able to have rest of mind cuz you know that you're doing exactly what you're supposed to do I want us to pray today in the name of jesus christ for every single that has yet to discover their purpose in life may the lord open your eyes in the name of jesus christ may he open your ears to your purpose may he open your eyes to your purpose in the name of jesus christ open your eyes open your ear in the name of jesus christ I pray oh god for every single out there who's still wondering they're still thinking they're still trying to figure out themselves they're still trying to learn what is their plan what is your plan for their lives lord what is your purpose for their lives lord I pray in the name of jesus father lord their purposes will become clear in the name of jesus christ their purposes will become clear in the name of jesus christ because walking in your purpose brings about satisfaction and fulfillment those are things that you need to add to really enjoy self-care in the name of jesus christ father I pray open people's eyes everyone every single out there who has yet to discover their purpose especially those who don't even have any clues some of us have you know clues you know we've been you know some of you know some of us you know especially in our single season we knew we had some ideas we have the whole picture but we had an idea We had an idea, I pray that whatever picture we have, clear or unclear, the Lord will make it clear in the name of Jesus Christ. The Lord will make it clear in the name of Jesus Christ. Father Lord, we lift up our singles to you today, in the name of Jesus Christ. Father, help them to discover their purpose, help them to discover their destiny. Lord, open their eyes, direct them from now, begin to direct them, begin to move their steps. Direct their steps in the name of Jesus, order their steps into destiny. In the name of Jesus, into purpose in the name of Jesus. And cause them, Jesus said, I must work. Ah, we're talking about self-care, we're talking about self-care, self-care. The first thing you think of with self-care, you think of rest. He said, I must work, I must work, I must work. Father, I pray in the name of Jesus Christ, for our singles out there, help them to be able to work the work that you've sent them to do. In the name of Jesus Christ, so that they can have fulfillment and rest of mind and satisfaction. In the name of Jesus Christ, in Jesus' name we pray, amen. Amen. You know, one of the other self-care tips that uh um is so important also is prayer. And the reason why this is on there is because God says in First Thessalonians five seventeen, pray without ceasing. Now, here's something that uh Proverbs, I'm gonna read two scriptures to you, both taken from Proverbs sixteen. Proverbs sixteen one says, the preparations of the heart belong to man. But the answer of the tongue is from the Lord. That's verse one. Verse nine of Proverbs sixteen says, a man's heart plans, a ma- a man's heart plans his way. But the Lord directs his steps. Listen, one of the reasons that we need to pray so much, right? Is because we need God's involvement in our lives. We need God's involvement in our lives. And how do we call God into our lives? We do so through prayer. You know, we do so, we connect with him in prayer. As we connect with him, we might have whatever plans we have. But then in prayer, the Lord directs our steps. And so we need to be able to pray. Prayer is a self-care tip, a biblical self-care tip for our singles out there. Listen, if you can establish that in your single season, all the better, all the better. For when you go into that next season of marriage, is you're better off, you're better off. I pray in the name of Jesus Christ, Lord, for our singles out there, teach them to pray. In the name of Jesus Christ, teach me to pray. Father, is even one of my goals for this year, I wanna pray more, more than I've ever prayed in the past. Father, teach me, teach me. And for our singles out there, Lord, teach them, teach them to pray. So that their plans, that, that you are involved in the plans of their lives. In the name of Jesus Christ, so that you all can communicate, Father Lord Jesus. The plans and the purposes in the name of Jesus Christ, those things are laid out, those things are established. Those things are, you know, reviewed in prayer. I pray in the name of Jesus Christ, that you will make prayer a, a, a. Uh a hallmark in the life of every single in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. That they will not ever cease from praying, because the Bible says, don't do that. It says pray without ceasing, pray without ceasing. That they will, you will make prayer a lifestyle of every single in the name of Jesus Christ. You're just setting yourself up for success in the future, success in any season that's coming. In the name of Jesus Christ, ah, Father, help, 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 help our singles to be able to pray. You know, help our singles to be able to pray in the name of Jesus Christ. It's much, you're better off, you're setting yourself up for much, for more success. When you involve God in your plans and you pray in the mighty name of Jesus. In Jesus mighty name we have prayed, amen. Finally, last self-care tip, biblical self-care tip is study the word of God. Now, why should you study the word of God? Well, the word of God tells you everything about yourself. It tells you what God believes about you. It tells you what, it tells you who you are, it tells you your identity. It tells you how to live, it tells, everything that you need is right in the scriptures. The Bible says in Joshua one eight, this is how you should treat the scriptures. It says, this book of the law shall not depart from your mouth, but you shall, you shall meditate in it. Day and night, that you may observe to do according to all that is written. For then will you make your way prosperous, and then you will have the success. If you wanna be successful in life, if you want your way to be prosperous, you need to know the word of God. That is a self-care tip. So as you, as the world says, go and get it, get, go and get your nails done, you know. Bible says, read your Bible, as it says, go on that vacation, it says, yeah, well, study the book of James, you know. Read that Bible in the name of Jesus Christ. I pray for singles, if you can know, if you can equip yourself with the word of God, even before marriage, you're better off. Your life is better, your life is better, your, everything is better. I pray in the name of Jesus Christ for every single, that you begin to study the word. The Lord will begin to open your eyes and begin to give you revelation, you'll know what to do. Bible says, but you shall meditate on it day and night and observe to do according to all that is written. How will you know what to do if you don't study what is written? May the Lord help you to study the word, to meditate on it, let it be the one, the thing that proceeds from your mouth. Day and night, in the name of Jesus Christ. That is what will help you, that is what will guide you, that is what will make your way prosperous. In the name of Jesus Christ, that is even how your marriage, how you be directed into marriage. In the mighty name of Jesus Christ, that's how to have a successful marriage. In the mighty name of Jesus, knowing what the word says, knowing his word. It will make, it will equip you in the name of Jesus Christ. For the darts of the enemy that he wants to throw at you and throw at your marriage, you need to be fully equipped. How even better off are you if you can do that in the single season? I pray the Lord will open your eyes. I pray the Lord will open your eyes to his word in the mighty name of Jesus. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Oh, Father, I thank you for this opportunity once again. Thank you for the privilege to be able to pray, pray for singles. You know, we know, Father, everybody was born single, nobody was born in a marriage. Everybody was born single, so everybody goes through the single season. I pray, oh God, that every one of us uh who are still there, for those in this community that are still in that. Season, single season, the Lord will settle you in the name of Jesus Christ. The Lord will help you to care for the whole self, not as the world says. But as your s- word says, as the scripture says, to take care of the whole self. The Bible says, I wish above all that you prosper and be in health, even as your soul prospers. I decree and declare over the life of every single here, you will prosper, you will be in good health. And your soul will prosper in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Thank you, mighty God, in Jesus mighty name we pray, amen. Pastor, I wanna thank you once again for this opportunity. Bless God for your life. I decree that everything uh that you need to care for your whole self. That the Lord make available to you also in the name of Jesus. Thank you so, so much for watching. Thank you um uh for joining us in prayer, we're here uh every month. And so make sure you, you, you join us. I wanna say that um for those who are trusting the Lord to enter marriage, that your season of marriage. The Lord is gonna open that door very, very soon, sooner than you expect. In the name of Jesus Christ, and we rejoice for, for, for you and with you. And I pray that even in this season, the single season, that the Lord will help you to maximize this time in the name of Jesus. You are blessed, God bless you, thank you so much, once again, in Jesus' name, amen.